Okay, it is six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with roll calls, starting on my right for Mr. Glines.
Yeah, Mitch Glines, planning and zoning.
Mark Snyder, planning and zoning.
Jeff Anderson, San Diego Township.
Francine Larson, Blue Hill Township.
Dalton Kiderling, Oroc Township.
Steve DeMules, Palmer Township.
Terrence Vanderai, Clear Lake Township.
Bruce Abell, Big Lake Township.
Kathy Sims, Haven Township.
Will Chassel, Avonia Township.
Lynn Wataschek, planning and zoning.
Okay, and then I need to ask the members to confirm that their mic is on. And lean into it when you're speaking. Was there something else? Okay. The meeting is being recorded, both audio and visual. And the Planning Commission stands as a recommending body. All the issues that we've addressed tonight will be forwarded to the County Board of Commissioners on June 3rd, 2025 at nine o'clock. I'm gonna ask if there, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes and if there are any proposed changes?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
They are not.
Or not.
We are gonna discuss solar at the end.
Understood.
Thank you.
On the agenda that was sent out, it was a discussion on Planning Commission or is that?
Um, we've decided that we wanna talk about solar in light of some of the feedback we're getting from the townships.
Understood. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I had an agenda item number one. It is, uh, let me get caught up here. And I hope I pronounce this right. Joshua Cruto.
Perfect.
Oh. Requested interim use permit for a home business in an accessory building, Blue Hill. Red, Blue Hill Rental LLC. Property address thirty-two, one-nine-two, one-hundred-and-fiftieth Street Northwest, Princeton. PID fifteen dash zero-zero-four-six-six dash zero-three-two-zero. In section one, township thirty-five, range twenty-seven, Blue Hill Township. Who's got this one?
Uh, I do, Chair.
Mr. Schneider.
Yep. Alright, uh, Blue Hill Township heard this on April fifteenth and recommended approval provided the county is okay with hours uh, and cleanup of equipment. Um, we received no other comments from any other departments. Uh, the applicant is proposing to operate a small rental business, Blue Hill Rental LLC, from the property at nine-six-zero, or sorry, from a nine-hundred-and-sixty square foot accessory building on the property. According to the applicant, they intend to rent compact equipment for homeowners that feel comfortable using that for doing miscellaneous construction projects. Example of equipment includes mini excavators, walk-behind skid steer, uh, trailer, stump grinder, and lot, log splitter, and et cetera. Business activity on the property would be limited to the storage, maintenance, loading, and unloading of this equipment. Uh, the business will be operated by Joshua Cattu. Uh, and he's not proposing to have any employees, uh, that are, you know, coming to the property in connection to the business. Proposed hours of operation, um, where customer interface will be by appointment only, nor, or earlier than seven AM and no later than nine PM. And it looks like seven days a week. Most interactions will be between, uh, will be between seven-thirty and I, uh, should be a, shoot, I'm missing a time there. Um, seven-thirty to five-thirty, I think. The applicant is proposing to store for three trailers on the south side of the accessory building. Uh, the access to the building will be through a secondary access that has been approved by the, the town board. Uh, site inspection staff observed the applicant's property was well-maintained. Um, the applicant already owns his equipment for personal use and believes he'd be a good service to provide for neighbors. And when we do come to public hearing, I did receive one email, uh, that I'll read into the record at that point because it did come after the uh, packets went out. And with this, uh, conditional use permit, I have eight recommended conditions of approval.
Eight or nine?
Nine.
Okay, are there any questions, uh, from the board for staff? If not, at this time, we'll call the applicant up to the podium. Please state your name and address.
Chair, Board, I'm Joshua Crato, uh, owner of three-two-one-nine-two, one-hundred-and-fiftieth Street Northwest, Princeton, Minnesota.
Are there any questions for the applicant? None. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If you've got any comments to make regarding this issue, please step to the podium and recite your name and address and proceed with your questions. Is is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue?
Um, I do have one comment that I do have to read into the record. Okay, Chair, I'll do that at this point. Alright, uh, so this is an email that I received from Eddie Antera Sager. Uh, address is three-one-nine-six-four, one-hundred-and-fiftieth Street Northwest, Princeton, Minnesota. Uh, to whom it may concern, we received notice of a public hearing held at six PM, May fifteenth, for, uh, the applicant requesting an interim use permit for home business accessory building at the above listed near the state of PID. We live just a few houses down from the Cattus, and I have concerns with the home business coming into our neighborhood. My understanding is that Joshua would be renting equipment out of his home. Our main concern is increased traffic and strangers, uh, through the neighborhood. The Cattus do live near, um, uh, our street, meaning that all customers will need to drive past several times, uh, to get to their property. We already have issues with speeding and an intensive drivers in the neighborhood. We do not like to add this if possible. We live in a somewhat secluded neighborhood and would prefer that people who do not live here or that it's guests to be driving through, uh, possibly, uh, possibly scooping out properties. At our last home, it was broken into, which is a very scary situation, and we do not wish that upon anyone. We would do anything to protect our neighbors in our homes. Our last, our, our last concern is the possibility of declined property values. It may be more difficult to get buyers due to increased traffic in this home business itself being, uh, close to our home. Please take our comments into consideration before acting on their request. Uh, we've spoken with a few neighbors since receiving the notice who have had the same concern as us. Hopefully, these neighbors will also send in emails or attend the meeting.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Once again, is there anyone else out there wishing to speak on this issue?
If I could ask the applicant, um, kind of the description I gave of your business, you and I have had a few conversations about the nature of your business. Did my staff report capture it or kind of the nature of what you intend to do out there?
Yes, I think it's, uh, for the most part, accurate. I think the only other part that I'd add is this is not a twenty-four-hour business. Um, I still have a nine-to-five job. I still work forty hours a week. This is using equipment that I already own. It's, uh, really just trying to benefit the community. It's in the mornings prior to me starting work, possibly over lunch break, and during the evenings, possibly on weekends as well. And the only other part that I'd like to address would be the increase in traffic. I'm not renting a full rental store's worth of equipment. I don't have a hundred line items that I'm looking to rent out. I'm limited to about ten pieces of equipment, two trailers, and eight or nine attachments for a skid steer. Um, so to say that there will be an increase of traffic, yes, uh, that's inevitable with any business. But it's not, it's not a hundred line items, and it's not fifteen people a day. Uh, if I were to talk during the rental season, which I foresee being, um, the end of April to, let's say, the, the end of October, I would, I imagine unless, I'm way off base here, five to seven customers a week. So on average, one, maybe on the weekends, you might see three customers, and that would be a pickup and a drop-off, so that would be six additional vehicles a day. Uh, but I, I will grant that hauling equipment on a trailer, trailers are noisy. Uh, and if someone's coming through at seven-thirty in the morning, there may be the potential for a little bit more traffic and not just vehicular traffic, but, uh, trailers. So that'd be my one contention.
Are you, uh, or can you acknowledge the nine conditions and are you able to abide by those?
I reviewed the conditions today, and yes, I do believe I'm able to abide by all of them.
So you've had this equipment there for a while? Um, have you been moving it off-site to do it, uh, to work in other places?
No, primarily, most of the equipment I've had, uh, when I moved into the equipment, we had oak wilt. We had a lawn that needed to be installed. I started with a little John Deere tractor. Since then, I purchased a skid steer and a few other pieces of equipment to help neighbors, members of the community and family, projects such as mowing, land grading, uh, garden tilling, snow removal, those sorts of things. So over the, the course of, uh, the past five years I've lived in the community, I've acquired much of this equipment. So to say that have I been moving off-site, no, uh, other than to help neighbors, help other people.
But I guess even at that point, you, you're moving it off-site at some point to go help relatives or whatever else, so it's already leaving your property and coming back. I, I would argue that that's kind of equivalent to five to seven times a week. I mean, I know that's a little bit higher, five to seven times a week, but you've already been moving it. So to say that there's gonna be increased, increased traffic on the roads, I would argue that you have already been moving it down those same roads yourself, so now it's just gonna be someone renting and moving it down the road instead of you.
Yes, and that's, to that extent, I, I could foresee, um, a contractor coming in, instead of a three-quarter ton truck, they might be pulling a fifty-five-hundred dump truck. You know, so there, there very well may be larger trucks pulling larger trailers. And that's the, the contention I can give, um, the Sagers, is that there will be other people, but...
But I, I just don't see the increase in volume.
Yes, yep.
Kind of in your favor, going against the, the email.
Understood.
I'm really seeing that you're already using it somewhat, somewhat using the road, so renting it out, they've already been leaving the property, so it's already something that's happening. It's not something new.
Acknowledged.
Well, once again, I'll ask if there's anyone else to speak on this issue? Is there anyone else to speak on this issue? Is there anyone else to speak on this issue?
Moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
You got it.
Moved and seconded, Francine. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I do have one question. It talks in here, Mark, about screening. There's a fence. Is there a requirement for screening?
Well, if we go back to the photos.
So there's not a requirement for screening.
There isn't?
No. But if you, so if we go to the photos, this is a septic mound right here. And then he'll, you can see a trailer parked right back here, and so if you kind of look at the property, um, the property is well-maintained.
There's a mound.
And there's a fence, a privacy fence on the north side of his property. So there's a fence existing right here. He has a septic mound there, so it's not, there's not a screening requirement, um, but it is pretty well-screened and it is a well-maintained property.
It just said on here that it belonged to the neighbor, so if there was a screening requirement.
Ruby, thank you.
Just to clarify, this is a home business and accessory building, so everything's inside except those two trailers, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Caveat, and as shown.
Please.
Apologies.
As shown in the pictures, and I think that where the screening becomes important, is that there are some skid steer attachments stored outside. Um, this isn't in addition to, to what the business is doing. This is where I've stored them as an individual user of those attachments. So as you see here, and if you go back to the picture from the road, you can't see them from the road, uh, but behind the septic system and out of view from the neighbor because of the fence, that's where those attachments are stored. So trailers on the south side, attachments in the screened-in area, and equipment in the shed, ma'am.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the IUP with the nine conditions and the findings.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded, uh, to approve the, uh, IU, or IUP request. At this time, we'll have, uh, a recital of the findings of the fact, Mr. Schneider.
Uh, so no interim use permit shall be approved or recommended for approval by the Planning Commission unless said commission shall find. Uh, so staff has provided, some recommend, recommend response to this to the questions. Uh, the board can choose to accept those or not, or modify. Uh, number one, that the interim use permit will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity.
Yes, the proposed use is not anticipated to diminish and impair values within the immediate area. This is a service that may be valuable to neighboring property owners, provided the proposed conditions of approval are adhered to.
Yeah. Number two, that the establishment interim use permit will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties or vacant properties for uses predominant in the area.
Yes, the permitting of this IUP will not impede development. The building exists, and the property will continue to be used as a residential property.
Okay. That adequate utilities, access road range, other necessary facilities have been or being provided.
Yes, the applicant is not requesting additional utilities beyond what a normal residence would require.
Okay. And number four, that adequate measures have been taken to provide sufficient ostre parking, loading space for the proposed use.
Yes, the applicant has enough parking space to accommodate the proposed use.
Uh, number five, that adequate measures will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and control lighted signs, uh, in a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result.
Yes, the business is not anticipated to cause offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration to the immediate area. All activities will be conducted in the accessory building.
Thank you.
It's been moved, seconded, and the findings of facts recited. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Uh, your issue will be brought up in front of the County Board on June third, I believe.
Correct.
And, and, uh, it would behoove you to be here for that, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you. Agenda item number two. I guess we're gonna have a, a discussion on solar farms because of the results from.
Thanks for coming. Well, and staff is, staff is looking for some feedback from the townships. We know that some of the townships have some concerns with regard to solar farms. We've seen solar farms currently in Clear Lake Township. We've had a few in Big Lake. That was several years ago. We're not getting many new applications, however, we did recently receive an application this past winter up in San Diego Township. That was not one that was being done through the Excel program. That one is Conexus Energy. They also, Conexus Energy did one up in Baldwin a number of years ago, if you recall, up by the airport. Um, I don't believe we have any other ones in the county, in Oroc or in Blue Hill, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but we are seeing these big transmission lines coming in. Um, there's two different transmission lines that are, um, proposed and approved that are beginning construction. That it's possible that other townships now may see additional, um, solar farms proposed. And so because of some of the feedback that we're getting from the townships, we're asking for the Planning Commission and the members to let us know what the thoughts are with your townships and what you're wanting to see and what some of your concerns may be. Mark, is there anything you wanna add to that?
No, I, I do think, you know, thanks for mentioning the two different, you know, large utility lines coming through. Those are kind of a factor that does change things up a little bit. Um, and the fact that Clear Lake is seeing, you know, seventy-five percent of our solar projects, eighty percent of our solar projects. And this board has seen a lot, and we know that each time we have a solar project come up, there's a lot of discussion here at Planning Commission. So we wanted to have this conversation because the challenge is, you know, staff is going to, you know, right now, the ordinance allows it. You know, we would have to, um, go through the County Board to get some type of approval, to do any kind of change to the ordinance or moratorium or something along those lines to alter, uh, what our ordinance currently does with solar. And so we're looking to just try and get some feedback and recognize that three townships have been very clear that they, you know, do not wanna see solar kind of going in those areas, but right now, the ordinance doesn't prohibit that, so. We'd like to hear what the Planning Commission's thoughts are on solar, you know, in Sherburne County.
Well, we drafted a letter last week and we sent it to, uh, to Lynn expressing our concern with, uh, expanding of solar, uh, especially in Palmer Township. Uh, with the Northland Reliability Project coming through, um, there'll be, there'll be more, uh, there'll be more opportunities to hook up solar to that. And the current Township Board in Palmer doesn't feel that that's the best for the township. We've always supported agriculture, and we will continue to do that, and that's where our priorities li- uh, lie instead of, uh, using up that valuable land for solar arrays and, uh, let the pivots sit idle for decades. We would, we would appreciate any restrictions or limitations that the county could put on, uh, any type of, uh, solar expansion.
Well, and currently, the county has where they're not allowed within the shoreline district, so within a thousand feet of a lake, three hundred feet of a river, stream. Um, in addition to that, trying to remember what else I was just gonna say.
There's other.
The, in addition to that, the other thing I was gonna bring up is you have that whole issue with property owners, property owner rights. You know, for some people, it's something that would provide them with a long-term income and balancing that with neighbors that may have to look at the solar panels. And so trying to figure out how we can do this in such a way that gives some people the ability. Um, do we need to put a moratorium on for a year and relook at it? How do you allow it in, you know, allow it in the Ag District, but then not allow it in Palmer? Or we'd allow it in Clear Lake, but not Palmer? So trying to figure out the logistics of it, because maybe some townships are still okay with it. And we have to figure all of that out, but trying to talk through some of this with you.
Well, you know, it's, it, you know, and I get the, the rights of property owners, you know, and, but I also understand when things happen that affect other property owners. And we see that on the lake a lot, where one, one place does something and it affects so many others. And I think that this, uh, this solar is one of those situations that it's just not that, that simple where it's, it's all for that property owner, it's gonna affect a lot, lot of others.
You know, just a, kind of a reference point, two thousand and nineteen, um, the county did place a moratorium on solar, um, primarily revolving around Highway one-sixty-nine and Highway ten and portions of Big Lake Township. Um, and some of the basis for that was we didn't wanna see solar going, you know, in some of the prime areas for possible commercial industrial uses along one-sixty-nine or Highway ten, maybe not the best use. And then on, in Big Lake Township, part of it was, because it, you know, there's a, an effort to try and identify a location for a river crossing. So a corridor, highway corridor connecting Highway ten and ninety-four. So we had transportation concerns. So we put that moratorium in place in two thousand and nineteen. Six months into it, uh, after working with those townships, um, we did place prohibitions on solar in certain areas. So it's difficult to do a blanket prohibition on solar, you know, in a community. Um, but trying to limit where they're at, with certain impacts of those solar, um, is part of the reason we also, in our comprehensive plan, uh, made a provision where they have to convert the land use from agricultural to energy production. And that came up really because when we were going out to the townships, we heard concern. I remember being in San Diego Township and it was pretty heated. I wasn't talking about solar that night, uh, but they were pretty clear that they didn't want solar, and if solar was gonna go into their township, why don't you put it in the refuge? I think it's a line that I got. Um, so, but there was multiple townships that kind of communicated that, so part of the comprehensive plan ordinance, or part of effort of the comprehensive plan of establishing, you know, the utilities, and you guys saw that for the first time last month, is to look at that site location. Does that location make sense? And so if we can't prohibit it, but is this an area that has high agricultural values? Is it an area that is, has some kind of historical or community significance? That the township has strong feelings, like, hey, this is not what we want. The township could make that objection to the comprehensive plan amendment. So it's another opportunity to kind of, not just to not, you know, push back against, because it doesn't have the right solar reflection or the right fence, but, you know, it just doesn't fit well in this community. So that is a provision that we did put into the comprehensive plan to try and give the townships a little more say as we dealt with these things or as these things came up. So those are some of the things that we've done, you know, in dealing with solar. Um, but really, it's kind of understanding what the concerns are of the townships, you know, with solar going in those areas. Is it just the fact that you don't wanna see solar, you know, anywhere in the township, or is it areas, some areas that are more acceptable versus areas that are not acceptable?
So, so my thought is, my question also is, do we have a, do you have an idea of a saturation point? You know, is there?
The saturation point is tied to the transmission lines. And so there's an organization called MISO, as I understand it, M-I-S-O, and they determine how much capacity those transmission lines can take. And these companies have to go to them to determine whether or not they can add into the transmission lines.
I'm talking about saturation of usable land. So is it twenty percent of a township? Is it five percent of the Ag in the town? I'm, I'm talking about... So I was down in Owatonna, and I was driving down a road, and it was like, I'm, it, like, all of a sudden, this solar field came out of nowhere, and I turned a corner and vroom, there was another one. It was like, everywhere I went, I was surrounded by solar. And what kept running through my mind was, how much is enough? And, I mean, drive down Highway ten, it's, there's a lot going on there. And so when I talk about saturation points, is, has there ever been a discussion about how much, how much would be tolerable or how much would be acceptable?
I think that's a good discussion to have.
In Sherburne County?
Yep, I think that's.
I mean, how, how much of our Ag land do we want? And if we have that saturation point, um, has there any, been any discussion about agrivoltarics? You know, where they, where they produce crops underneath?
Actually, what Excel's doing, just because it's interesting and threw me off when I found out about it, um, they're having up to, I think it's two thousand sheep are coming in to graze the land in Clear Lake um, so that they don't have to use chemicals and to control the vegetation that's there, and they'll rotate them around on the different solar panel fields. But we were approached by them recently, um, but there's such a large amount of acreage there, so the number of sheep that are there compared to the acreage isn't considered a feedlot, is our understanding. And so therefore, they don't need a feedlot permit.
Wow.
Yeah. And I can't remember what the number was. Do you remember what I told you it was? A sheep is, you know how a cow is one-point-five? Was it point-two?
It was a quarter.
A quarter?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, a quarter of one animal unit, so once you divided that in, even though it sounds like a lot, under the state rules, it didn't rise to the threshold of needing a feedlot permit. So, um, that was interesting, looking at that. The other thing I was gonna mention briefly is, I believe, under the state regulations, there's something that they reference called prime farmland, and if something's considered prime farmland, and there's maps that were predetermined for where these areas are, um, there is argument that these should not be placed where there is prime Ag land, prime farmland, rather. And, um, so depending on where they're proposed, that could come into play.
And how would that be determined?
There's maps that show already where that land has been determined to be located. Yep.
Yeah, it's, um, USDA, I think, pretty, I think that might be who produces the maps, but they are part of our comprehensive plan. You can go look at kind of the prime agricultural lands in Sherburne County.
But I thought it was, it was allowed within Ag.
But what Lynn's saying is, it would be an argument, you know, that, hey, this area is identified, it's primary, you know, it's prime agricultural land. We, you know, this property is used for agricultural purposes. We object to this project because it's in, you know, an area, located in an area that has prime agricultural land. And I heard one of the comments saying, you know, we want to preserve our agricultural areas also. So that would be an argument, you know.
During the land use map amendment.
During the land use map, yeah, that's kind of where.
Say it again, Mitch.
What Mark had mentioned earlier, any new solar farm that's coming in has to do a land use map amendment for the comprehensive plan for, uh, energy production, private solar. And if, you know, an applicant is submitted to the township, that's where. And if, you know, an applicant is submitted to the township, that's where a township has the chance to-
Make the argument that that's prime agricultural land and we don't want to see prime agricultural land converted to solar, because farming is still what our community does.
Do we have any of that in Sherburne? And the reason I ask, like, O'Rourke is sandy as can be, so I highly doubt O'Rourke has any.
We actually do. I've looked up a parcel and honestly, I was shocked that a lot of it was classified as that. So, we do have some. I don't know how much, I haven't looked at the whole map. It was just a specific area I was looking at at the time.
Well, I mean, it's potatoes.
Yeah.
You know?
It's true.
They grow them good.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Mr. Chair? Uh, stepping back to Kathy's point of saturation level, I think the same argument was, same discussion was brought up relative to landfills. Does Sherburne County have enough? Why are we getting more? What about dispersing these across the rest of the state? And I know it's location, I know it's convenience, but landfills, solar, all this is for the public good, but we're the ones getting it.
Aggregate.
Well, and we're not just the only ones using the landfill, and we're not the only ones doing solar and stuff. It's, but we're taking, we're, we're taking the heat for it, you know, and eventually something happens.
My own personal take on it is, well, it's for twenty-five to thirty-five years. And I think that's just window dressing. It's not gonna be twenty-five or thirty. It'll get replacements and it'll, it'll, it's practically permanent.
As I said, that, that's just the contract, they can always renew afterwards.
Right. One man's opinion.
And that's what we're looking for, is some feedback and guidance so that, you know, we can discuss it in the office and maybe do a workshop with the county board and figure out, you know, how do we want to potentially deal with this? So we're looking for ideas from you and from your townships as far as your concerns. What are your concerns? Do you have any thoughts or ideas on how we could address this? Because maybe you'll come up with something we haven't thought of.
On, on top of all this, it comes down to seemingly unimaginable when you get a situation, a lake up beyond the power plant. The state comes in and says, we'll handle this now. You have no say.
Well, and that is the case when they're more than a certain size, and I believe it's fifty megawatts off the top of my head, but I could be wrong on that number. It's forty or fifty, I never can remember. But once it hits a certain size, we have no say over it.
Right.
We can comment on it, but that doesn't mean that they're gonna take into consideration our comments.
That, that's my point.
Yep.
Exactly that.
And so a lot of those that are through Excel, all of them are the great big ones that we have no say over. So that's, I believe three of those have been approved.
Which would probably indicate there's going to be more.
Could be.
I'd like to piggyback on what Bruce said. Landfills, solar farms, the landfill is going to be in Livonia Township soon. And I feel that the garbage is coming from Minneapolis when they quit, once they quit burning in Minneapolis. A lot of garbage comes from Minneapolis. I think that if we, the county, and us as a planning board and the planning commission, first of all, we, it's, it's in our county, it's our property, it's our neighborhood. If we're going to, why should we be subsidizing other townships or the other counties and other cities? I think the residents should get a break on their garbage when they take it there. I, I think that even the solar, if the solar farms are gonna be developed in our, in our counties, and, or in our county and our townships, if it's generated here and we're putting up with the headaches, or whatever you want to call it, the, the views and everything else, then maybe there should be a rate reduction or some, because we're putting up with the, with some of the others' background and so forth. So I think it's, it's a, it's a big animal, but I, I really think there's a lot to consider here.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's interesting, every, you know, is there a break? Any, so yes, we get all the solar. And Clear Lake Township has been one of the townships that's gotten, you know, tons of solar, you know. So they basically, you know, probably eighty percent of the permits. And, yeah, it is converting agriculture use, and there's really not much benefit to those individual property owners. I know Excel did help offset taxes, but, yeah.
But like, it's like Shurco, I mean, look what, look what happened to Becker. When Shurco moved in there, the city of Becker, they financed the whole town for years. And why, why could that be done there? And why can't we find out a way to help these businesses finance the county?
There is a production tax. I'm not sure how that's been allocated yet.
And I don't know either, but I've just thrown-
It's per megawatt, but the township stands to benefit some from that, from a-
The county's a big benefactor there.
Yeah. But I don't think it's been entirely allocated yet.
Right. But I, I just thought, I think we should consider, and the county should consider, is, is my point.
What other concerns do the townships have about this? I know that San Diego is having issues with solar. We've heard from Palmer and we've heard from Livonia. Are other townships concerned about having solar?
Recycling and maintaining is, I think, a big issue.
Okay.
And it's not just maintaining of panels I'm talking about, and, and we've already discussed this. What kind of trees do, and, blah, 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 cause, but maintaining those. And, and some of them are such a large entity that is so far removed from Sherburne County or Haven Township or Livonia Township. It's hard to get their attention.
Lynn, to answer your question, Big Lake Township was concerned and was supportive of the moratorium in two thousand nineteen. Everybody got asked and our response was, we don't want to see all of our ag land go to solar. I mean, it happens fast.
And we were supportive at that point, too.
Right. I think most of the townships were.
Hang on a second. Carrie, has there been any discussion at Haven?
Not that I'm aware of now, but I know we're very concerned about losing almost seven hundred acres.
Say it louder.
You want me to come up?
No, just-
We are concerned about losing almost seven hundred acres to mine.
Yeah, yeah.
Or losing a chunk of our-
But not solar, because we really don't have a lot.
But I will say that there, Reuters has just announced that power inverters, which are predominantly made in China, are used throughout the world and that they have, they're supposed to be firewalls, but they put secret communication devices in the solar panel inverters. So that's popping around in different news. So that is also a concern. If you get enough of those, they can dismantle our power grid.
Blue Hill hasn't had a formal discussion with the new board members. However, I could, I could absolutely agree with everything that everybody's saying, that, you know, prime ag land would be our, our priority. We have small, some, some prime ag land.
I can bring it up Monday.
Is there any, is there any way that also Lynn or the team can? So I, as long as I've sat on this board and been in Haven Township, the, it used to be, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw out a figure that probably is totally inaccurate, but ten thousand dollars if you were going for cleanup or for dismantling. And now it's forty, and now it's a hundred thousand, and, and so there's no uniformity there? So is there, is there a thought to have more uniformity and possibly go back to those prior solar farms?
I'm not sure. We'd have to check with our attorney's office if we can go back to the prior solar farms. Because yes, the initial ones were at twenty-five thousand. That was as low as we had it. It was twenty-five thousand. Then the county went a number of years ago to a hundred thousand, and that's where we're currently at. After our last meeting, I did send out a poll to the zoning administrators to ask them, because the question came up, what are you charging for solar panels? And you're right, it does run the gamut. And I did get a bunch of information back from the different zoning administrators, so I am putting that information together. So if we do and when we do have a board workshop, that I can provide them with that information. And that could be something that could be discussed as well.
Is that in the form of a bond?
Nope, we require, well, we require cash. And we have thus far had, I believe, every one of them pay us in cash. And they don't get the interest on it. The county gets the interest on it for the full term that it's in there, which is between twenty-five and forty years, some of them.
And that is cashed in for that specific project?
For dismantling, if they don't dismantle them. So those are, those accounts are building up over that, for that specific project. They each have their own account with their own number that the assessors off, excuse me, auditors office set up so we can track those theoretically and know where they are in thirty years or better.
So I know there's other places, more other parts of the country that, like, businesses have them on top of their buildings, or I've seen actual parking lots where it's above the parking lot, basically. Have we gotten any interest in that? Because I think that, that removes some of your guys' concerns. It allows us to have solar farms, but it's not taking over, you know, the pretty forests or the ag land or anything like that. Have we gotten any interest in Sherburne County about that?
Not that I've heard of.
Okay.
Nope.
Well, and we don't, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know if I've ever seen, like, they have down south where they have all those parking lots, because they're protecting the cars from being-
It's dual purpose.
-baked to death.
Yeah.
You know, so they just, they stick those in all over the place.
It's actually a great idea in a parking lot anyways, it's fabulous.
They don't have snow removal.
I was thinking-
Yeah, they don't have snow removal either.
But they don't have snow removal, but for them, like you said, it's, it protects them the whole year for them.
The reason I ask about agrivoltarics is because when we were down in Arizona, probably three, four years ago, there was a, there was a farm out there, and granted, the panels were higher, but there was, I don't know if it was pumpkins or squash or whatever, but it was low maintenance ag crop that was, that was under there. It was pretty, pretty-
And we have that one in Big Lake Township, I actually toured it last year. Yep, they came in, agrivoltarics was a new word for us, we'd never heard of it, huh?
What's under it?
What's under the panel?
Um, they have different people that rent plots from them, smaller farmers or farmers that are with the, like, St. Paul or Minneapolis Farmers Market, and they put their stuff up here. But they don't have water, so I think there's like a water truck or something, or a big tank that people were utilizing. But we do have one agrivoltaic site in Sherburne County that we're aware of.
And just by observation, I was on Conroe Eight earlier this week, there are sheep present now.
Oh, they're there already, okay.
In, in a site or two.
Yeah, and that was a few weeks ago they called me, so maybe right away they brought them out already.
Well, there was a hint of some buckthorn out there.
Oh, well, that'll take care of that.
Talking about goats, too.
Yeah.
Cause goats will eat it.
Mm-hmm.
Any other practical concerns from sitting from your position as a planning commission member? As you've seen a lot of these come through, any other, you know, what's your planning hat on? You know, any challenges with these smaller mega, these smaller solar farms?
Well, I've, I've read also that, that large parcels of solar farms, it's not a hundred percent determined yet, but they can also have some effect on severe weather, just, just like Shurco supposedly has, you know, the plume and snow effect and so forth, so-
I think they call it microcom, finance.
So, so that's something, if, if it's here, we got, I mean, it's coming so fast, you can't keep up with it.
Well, ten years ago when it first hit, we said, oh, gee, we're in the wild, wild west of, I don't know if it was your term, somebody's term, but we're in the wild, wild west era, because we really don't know how to maintain it or how to, it was difficult to wrap your arms around, so.
Well, and if you think of something else, or you talk to your town board, and please reach out to Mark or I. We're more than happy to hear what your concerns are. You know, we need to try to figure this out, and we're not sure where this is gonna go or what we're gonna do, but we do need to talk about it, and we need to figure something out.
Will we be able to possibly butt noses again on this, on some of those major things like saturation point, recycling, maintaining, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, you know, continuing the conversation. I think, you know, you'll go back to your township, you know, kind of like you typically do. You know, I remember, you know, when Dave was sitting here to give an update of what happened as the, a planning commission. Go back to your townships and have this conversation. I don't know that the county is looking at this. I know the townships are, have said pretty clearly that they don't want to do this. There's certain limitations we do have. But so, yeah, this is a continuing conversation. We haven't found a solution yet, we're working towards this. There's a challenge with just saying we're not gonna allow solar, we're gonna be extremely restrictive on solar, because that may not be able to hold up. So we have to start looking at what are the primary issues that we're trying to address? And then go back and, you know, get, get support for those issues. Oversaturation, I think, is an interesting concept. We've probably seen one of the biggest land conversions, you know, in Minnesota history, really quickly with the solar farms in Sherburne County, the Shurcos. It just instantly changed that area, you know, thousands of acres going from agricultural production into solar. So we are saturated.
We should also mention to the members that the county is in the process of taking to the county board a contract with a company called Bolton and Mank. And they're gonna assist us in rewriting our zoning and subdivision ordinance now that we finished the comp plan. We took care of a few of the big topics and the big ordinances, floodplain, well, no, we didn't do floodplain. We did Shoreland and we did, oh yeah, we did do floodplain. Floodplain, Shoreland, we did the septic ordinance. And so now we want to go back and we want to fix the rest of the ordinance and make updates to it. And so you're gonna be, we're taking that to the county board at the beginning of June.
We'll be in the mix in this process. So we'll have our, you know, obviously the townships are key stakeholders, so they'll be part of the conversations about changing ordinances. And it's, you know, kind of like the comprehensive plan was one of those things we hadn't done for twenty years, you know, so we did a significant rewrite. We haven't redone the zoning ordinance since nineteen ninety-six. We've had tons of amendments, but we're gonna have a, a firm come in and assist us in updating the entirety of the ordinance. So solar will be one of those things that's gonna be changing, and this, you know, next ordinance is gonna be reviewed and, so.
So that's going to the county board in June.
Yep.
And then you'll be seeing a lot more of Mark and Mitch and I, and hearing from us more. And from our consultant, we'll be having the townships come in. I would imagine having a number of different meetings with the consultant to try to work with the townships and zoning staff to move forward to get this ordinance. And I believe it has a one-year term at the most. So we're hoping within a year, we'll have the ordinance rewrite completed. Just so that you're aware, that's coming.
Would you restate the setbacks? How far back from the river?
We don't allow solar within a thousand feet of a lake, three hundred feet of a river or stream, and it's not allowed in the Mississippi District.
I was just thinking what Butcher was saying about, you know, the impact of weather or the impact of heat retention. There's a lot of discussion out there about, you don't want to heat up your lakes. Well, maybe in April you do, but.
Well, again, if you think of anything, if there's anything else your township wants to share with us, please reach out to us, and we're more than happy. That's all we got.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good discussion, thank you.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.